All right, welcome to the Bothell City Council meeting for May 12th. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an update on the city's COVID-19 response. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. So due to the governor's extended stay home, stay healthy proclamations under 20-05, the governor's extended proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings. And in consideration for the health and safety of our council members, staff, and the public, tonight's meeting is being held remotely. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Because of the extensions to the governor's stay home, stay healthy proclamation, tonight's visitors comment portion of the meeting will be in writing only. Written comments submitted in writing by 3:00 PM today have been forwarded to all city council members and will be made part of the record. So at this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. So in addition, we have the following city staff that are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city clerk Laura Hathaway, city attorney Paul Byrne, police chief Ken Suberlich, and fire chief Bruce Crone. So that's all the staff I see, so we'll move on. So our meeting guidelines, I just want to reiterate that at the appropriate times, I'll be calling on each member, asking if they wish to speak or ask a question. And when it's time to vote, if you want to speak, such as make a motion or a second, please indicate by waving. This will help to avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. And remember, please mute your microphones when not speaking. So meeting agenda approval, please note that tonight's meeting agenda is final and only adjustments considered are consent items wishing to be polled for discussion or those items that are routine and necessary or COVID-19 related. That are added with approval of the majority of the council present. If anyone wishes to pull an item, please indicate on your WebEx by waving now. All right, so our, we have with us tonight a city manager's report on the city's COVID-19 response. Jennifer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we are two and a half months into our response to COVID-19. I watched the press conference yesterday with Dow Constantine and Seattle Mayor Jenny Durkin, and I thought that Mayor Durkin's comment really resonated with me. And she basically shared with the community that there is no playbook for what we're doing. And it's always nice to hear when your colleagues and others in the profession are sharing the same challenges, and there is no playbook for this. And we've been going day by day, and can they not hear me?
Jennifer, you were muted. We can't hear you.
I'm not, I'm not.
We still can't hear you.
But they told me to stay muted. I'm using my mic.
Yeah, yeah. Now we can hear you.
So is it the microphone needs to be closer? Can everybody hear me? I don't know what the difference is. Okay. So I'm going to start again. So we are two and a half months into our response to COVID-19. I listened to a press conference yesterday with Dow Constantine and Seattle Mayor Jenny Durkin. And the Seattle mayor made a very poignant comment that I really resonated with me, and that's basically, there is no playbook. This is completely new territory for all of us, and we're all looking at different ways to respond to this. Our communities are different, but all of us, our goal is to keep our community safe and do the very best we can with the resources that we have available to us. And so I just really appreciated that she acknowledged that, and we're literally going day by day. The vast majority of staff at the city of Bothell are still working. They're working to serve our community. So you may not see us here at City Hall, but we are out. We are, we are working from home. We're actively engaged with the community when we're out or providing services to our community, when we're in the, working on the streets and the parks. So work continues. City Hall, in the sense the building may be closed, but we are all here. We are working in the sense that we're here in spirit, providing services, and continuing to support our entire community. Our staff remains healthy, which is a great joy for all of us. And now, as we are working our way through the response, we are now starting to look at what reentry looks like. As the governor laid out his four-phase plan, the ability for government buildings to open is in phase three. And so we are starting to look at what that might look like and how we can start to reenter our workforce and still stay safe and still protect our community and our employees. I was asked a question today. I do one-on-one briefings with each of the council members, and I was asked a question today by councilmember Thompson about, you know, how can we best serve the community? And how are we out there learning about what's happening in different communities so we can, you know, do the best for Bothell? And it's a, it's a great question. My first response is, you know, we're in response mode, but we are active. All of us have professional associations that we're connected to. We're on weekly calls, if not more often, learning about what the different professions are doing. So finance, city managers, parks, public works, community development. We're all connecting to see what others are doing and best ways to handle the response and to support our communities. We're also working very hard to make sure that the organization stays financially stable, and we've been talking about the budget for several weeks now and actually for a longer period of time even before COVID. And so making sure that we can afford to do the things that we need to do for our community, things that are mandated, the things that we legally are responsible to do, and hopefully have some monies available to do some of the fund discretionary things as well. We are out constantly working with our legislators. We just are writing letters again to our congressional representatives. Another supportive package is in Congress being considered, and there is right now monies for local governments, so we want to continue to write. So we're keeping tabs on those kinds of things. Also working on the CARES funding and communicating with our governor and state legislature to continue to get support for our organization so we can deliver services to our community as well as any grants that could be available for our businesses. Last week, you had a presentation from our community, our economic development director or manager. She shared all of the work that she and our tourism manager are doing to support our businesses, the contacts, just touching base with them, as well as any grant programs and any support that we can provide them so they can try to survive this very catastrophic time. We're doing a lot of messaging. Since the day this started, we created a website, webpage on our website so that we could communicate and share important resources to our community so we could be a place that was trustworthy, that the community could go to and get answers and get information. And we've been trying to do a lot of really positive social media to support our community, to make sure that they're feeling all right and monitoring sort of the emotions and if there's things we can do to support them. Council has done videos to show support, which I know the community has really appreciated. So we're out there really communicating. As I mentioned at the start, parks and public works are out there, making sure that our parks and our roads are safe and trying to do work where we can and to continue projects such as the 522 expansion project for BRT, that work continues by the contractor, and so the oversight and inspections occurring by staff as well. Community development continues to do processing of permits and plans, very important, and as I mentioned, inspections. This saves jobs and makes sure that projects can keep moving forward. So when construction projects can continue to keep moving forward as they started last week, that these jobs are safe and work can continue. So this is really important work by all of these departments. Police and fire are here tonight. They're going to share their own stories, so I'm not going to take their thunder and let them share what they've been doing for the last two and a half months. Really proud of the work that they've been doing. Last week, council also asked us to evaluate closing Main Street for an opportunity for community gathering, once that's safe in the phases that the governor has laid out. And we'll be bringing that back to council on June 2nd, along with some other closure opportunities in the downtown to support our restaurants. So that'll be coming for your consideration. Also, on June 2nd, will be consideration of the CARES Act monies that are available, 1.4 million coming to Bothell, and how the council would like to expend those funds for our community and businesses and the delivery of services to our community by this organization. We're planning on having board and commission meetings starting up again in June. The governor's order will be lifted by then. Everything indicates that, and so we're able to have board and commission meetings again, those that hopefully can be done virtually if the board and commission members are comfortable with that, so we can start to have those interactions with our board and commission members as well. We've also scheduled the June budget workshops, the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. If everybody remembers from two years ago, we spent 12 hours together during the workshops. I don't know if we'll need all three evenings, but we've booked the time so that we can have the time to go through, as we know that there's some pretty big budget challenges that are coming. So some good discussion and make sure that the council and the community understand what's happening so we can put the 21, 22 budget together. There's a, as I mentioned, there is a new package, stimulus package in Congress, so we're tracking that closely and hopeful that some more additional funds can come to local government to support us. I did a little bit of research, and I am, I'm not a subject matter expert on these organizations, but I thought it helped put things in context. One of the things I keep saying is, we're not alone. We're in this together, and the challenges are massive nationwide. There was a recent article from an association of national counties. They are projecting that counties could see $144 billion impact over the next 18 months. This is a loss of revenue as well as added costs. We're talking in the billions and trillions now. We've passed millions. We're literally talking billions and trillions of dollars. King County is struggling as well. They just recently had two package, one package of 28 million come forward with additional funding and another 57 million being proposed. King County Metro is expecting a $400 million loss of revenue over the next three years. The King County's mid-funding, which is the mental illness and drug dependency program that brings in about $42 million a year, they're expecting about a 27% drop in those revenues. Those are critical revenues, especially for our navigator program and other really important mental health programs. So expect cuts in those, in those areas. And they're using reserves to cover a significant shortfall. Again, reserves that right now Bothell doesn't have, and other communities are able to soften some of this financial blow because they do have some rainy day funds and some reserves. Sound Transit receives 58% of its revenue from sales tax, which is a staggering hit for them. They're currently going through a financial realignment, which basically means that they're taking a look at all of their projects and identifying what's essential and looking at how they potentially can stage projects to be able to accommodate this significant loss in revenue. They plan to go to their board in July with all of the projects and look for prioritization of projects. So we're watching that as well and working closely with Sound Transit on that project. We'll keep you informed as we get additional details. Washington State is looking at a $7 billion loss over the next couple of years of revenue, and in 2020 alone, a $3.8 billion revenue loss. For, for this period of time, it's about a 14% decrease in their revenues for 2020. The federal government is also struggling, and things that are direct impact to local, to cities like us is the Highway Trust Fund. They're anticipating a $15 billion shortfall. So on programs that we relied on for our streets and roads and other federally funded programs, the federal government as well is going to see shortages and have to cut back on programming, funding for local governments. Recently, California, Oregon, and Washington sent a message to, to the White House saying that those three states basically need a trillion dollars to recover from this crisis, just the three states. So the magnitude of what we're facing is, again, there's no playbook. We're trying to watch every day. We're trying to make good decisions. As I talked about last time, you know, we are looking at, we have initiated furloughs and some layoffs, and 21, 22 is going to be a very challenging year. But it's very important that this organization stay fiscally sound as we go through this crisis, and that's what we're trying to do. If there are things within the community that the council is interested in us looking at, we're certainly always open to that. This is a great opportunity, as happened last week when councilmember Dewar brought up the closure of, potential closure of Main Street and the opportunity to look into that. We have limited resources, both staffing-wise and especially now if the layoffs go through and the furloughs, so there'll be less, less time here for projects. However, if there are things that are, can fall within the budget or are, become a priority of council, those are certainly things that we can look at for our community. We want to make this as soft a landing as possible, and we know the community is a big part of this recovery. So we're looking forward to, you know, making it through the phases and in the months ahead and want to be part of the solution as Washington and our area, you know, recover from this crisis and hopefully we don't go through a second phase. So that's my update. I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to our two chiefs.
Deputy Mayor Zornz. Trying to hide behind your hand there so I can't see you.
Yeah, real quick, Jennifer. I appreciated your comment that trying to make it as soft a landing as possible. I may write that where I can see that on a regular basis. Just, just one favor. I, I tried to take as many notes because I want to chew on the data that you were giving us. At some point in your leisure time, wherever that is, could you, could you send us those, those expected losses that you were listing off, you know, for Sound Transit and Metro and the state, what they, what they are anticipating the hits could be?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much. That's it.
And they're, they're not my expected losses. I read them on the internet. So it's just research that I did.
No, I wasn't, no, 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 no. I'm not giving, I'm not making you take ownership of it. I just, we just, people have chewed on it, and so I would like to kind of know what they're expecting and what, what they're bracing for. So thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
You have to take your, you're on mute?
You're, councilmember McAuliffe, you've been muted. Can you please contact?
Oh.
Nope, you're still on mute.
I'm muted. Pushing.
You're good, you're good.
So, so I really appreciate. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate councilmember Dewar thinking about Main Street closure in order to have the restaurants have the opportunity to be outside and serve the people. Gini Ash, as I've heard from the chamber, has really talked to a lot of people on Main Street and is getting good information about how they're, you know, what their concerns are, whether it works for them. I really appreciate that because I think that's where our first point that we have to reach, what do the merchants on Main Street think? So I appreciate councilmember Dewar bringing this forward and Gini Ash doing the work. I also, I think it's important to hear from them. Some people love the idea, some people do not. So, and once we know what they think, then the internal committee can meet and make some decisions. That was number one. Number two is that Dow Constantine is talking about having some dollars, grant dollars, to local government, and it would go to the cities, and the chamber would like to be sure that we can partner with them as well. So that's just, we always want to be sure that we partner with our small businesses and the chambers. So that's my comments, and I appreciate your report.
Yeah.
So the county had, has offered $3 million to all 30, I think it's 38 or 39 cities. I don't know if Seattle's included or not, in the, in the King County, in King County. And so the city managers have been meeting with SCA to discuss the best way. $3 million is not a lot of money around, among 3, 38 cities. So happy to include the chamber in those discussions, but we're trying to figure out first what the mechanism of distribution is and what makes the most sense.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, on to our chiefs.
I don't know, you want to draw straws? So Bruce looks like he's leaning forward, so you want to go first, Bruce?
Fabulous. Okay. Great to see everybody. Hopefully my connectivity is doing well. I'm, I'm outside, just to let you know, because I got a dog on the inside. He's a little old, and she loves to bark, and she's making me nuts because I can hear her sometimes out here. So we'll try to get through that. Yes, it's like Jennifer's saying, this is a very interesting times we're in. Everybody knows that. I've got some, a few staff I just wanted to share a few of more, I guess, just tell you how we're doing business right now. So I can get your numbers later, but I'm not going to focus on loads and loads of numbers of what's going on, but just give you a feel for what we've got going on. So since, since this started for us, we'll call this March 1st is when it kind of started really hitting, up till about May 11th, we've had 87 known or suspected COVID calls that we, our folks have been on in Bothell and the Bothell area. Of those calls, we transported 18 folks to the hospital, and we had AMR, who's our private ambulance provider, they were doing quite a bit of transports for everybody. They transported 37 of our folks to the hospital during this. It's, it's kind of waned off. Well, we're not seeing a lot of those calls anymore, so that's good, but that's the total calls we've had so far. And the great thing out of that is, I don't know if we're one of the only agencies, but one of the few agencies that have had zero exposures to COVID for our personnel this entire time. I know Seattle had folks in quarantine and isolation, red, and everybody did, and we have not. The folks have been doing a great job keeping protected, doing the right thing, and so we're doing great there. So just to let you know, there's a, we've identified early on high-risk facilities, and essentially those were, they started off being skilled nursing facilities where they had people there with, with known health problems, usually older folks. And so the county started keeping track of those facilities where they got a COVID hit or potential hit, and they published that, so we kind of know when you're going there that there's that on premise. They've since added to this list larger developments with, with older populations like Boulevard Place on Main Street, the Shag development. That's considered a high-risk facility because they have a, the known COVID patient in the building with a lot of older folks that might be susceptible to it. So just kind of background on that. Along those lines, of the high-risk facilities, Bothell, we have nine so far that have been identified as having a problem or a problem or potential problem. There's five in Woodinville, and there's 23 in North Shore, Kenmore. So it's quite a bit over there. So we, we do cross borders, run these places, but we know we've identified where these properties are, so we take extra precautions going in. One of the, if you want to look at bright spots in some of this, the cooperation among the, the King County chiefs and for our case, Snohomish County chiefs as well, our dispatch center and King County Public Health has been phenomenal, never better. We have done amazing amount of stuff, passed guidelines quickly, got things going for everybody's benefit, and it's helping everybody out, and that part is going very, very well. Communications are great. We, we were meeting with King County Public Health week, or daily, up until a few weeks ago. We've cut that back to weekly. So we have our Bush Noble Deputy Chief Fire Marshal is our, has been designated the Bothell Medical Officer, and so he attends these meetings virtually and keeps up to mom what's going on in King County Medical, or King County Public Health, as well as Snohomish County. And they don't meet quite as often, but they're doing the same thing in Snohomish County, so we're, we're keeping track of both of them. Just to let you know really briefly, the trending of calls, we would have thought initially there'd be a huge spike in calls, people calling. It's actually gone down. It's, it's especially once that stay-at-home, that first week or so, the, the call volume really dipped, and people were just staying home. They weren't calling us. So we looked at that, and it turns out that for that same period, we're looking at the 1st of March to about the 11th of May this year, to the same period last year, we had 90 fewer calls. So it doesn't really mean much, it means people are staying home and not going out and getting hurt and freeway accidents and whatnot. So we did see a dip in calls. We've used, you hear the term PPE a lot probably now, personal protective equipment, and for that, it means a couple of things. One, it's our bunker gear we wear for fires, but also it's, it's the gear for medical calls. We've, we've gone to a, I guess you'd call that, being cautious and working through dispatch, and we are identified of a potential COVID call we're responding to. They query the person on the phone, ask them some questions, and if anything comes up on this list of COVID-related issues, they say, hey, let's be careful, it's a high, high exposure PPE. And so what we do now is, instead of having all three firefighters or if there's an A-Car two, instead of sending everybody in to see the patient, we're, we're sending one person fully decked out in the PPE, so they've got the masks, the mask, eyewear, gloves, and a gown. That person goes in, or better yet, we try to have the patient come to us, meet us at the door, so we can kind of do this outside, and talk to them and find out what's going on. And then if it's, if it's warranted, the rest of the crew will have their gear, they'll get that on and come into the scene as well. So we're trying to protect ourselves while we're interviewing the patient, kind of a thing. It's actually something we, we might stick around doing, one of these things that's a dynamic that may just change how we do business, because it seems to, one, it cuts down the gear that we have to use every time, and two, it keeps our other crews from potentially getting contaminated by not knowing what's going on in the scene. So that part's interesting, working that well, and we've used, in the same time period again, about 371 sets of PPE. So that means the masks, the eyewear, the gloves, the gown, all those together as a set, and we've done that 371 times. I can't tell you what we normally do in a year, but I know we may use 50 of those in an entire year maybe on call. So it's, it's a, it's a large number that we're going through, but we have plenty, we're doing good, and since things are kind of slowing down, we're, we're taking a breath here, and, and we're doing good on that. To help with the PPE, because we had some problems with the N95 masks getting availability initially, everybody was buying them. Shoreline has purchased a, it's a, it's a decontamination unit. Basically, they, they rented or bought one of those pods, these little storage pods things, and they've set it up now, and it's, they've got a machine in there that uses hydrogen peroxide to clean anything, but we're going to use to clean masks. And you can do, gosh, I don't know, 200 or 250, it's a big number at a time in there. We, we're working with Shoreline closely, we're up there this last week and did 50 masks, had 50 of them cleaned and brought back to the station for use, and you can do this up to 20 times for the masks. So this is great for, for right now, and in the future, if we do get a spike or something happens again and we get in a bind, we've got a way to extend the life of some of our PPE that otherwise we'd be in a bind. So that was really good. We also purchased three Victory PV200 electrostatic decontamination guns. It's basically a squirt gun on steroids is what it is. It's a, it's a device that's got a battery in it that aerosols, we use Biraxx to into the air, and it, it decontaminates things very, very quickly. It's much more efficient than us, especially the aid car. We're having a hard time after transporting a patient to clean the aid car, it takes about an hour. With this device, it's about five minutes of application. You wait 10 minutes for it to dry, and you're good to go. So it really speeds things up. We got three of these, Fire has two, Public Works has one, but they're, they're clearly a citywide implement, so we could use them for anybody, police, whoever needs it, decon, they're, they're available, ready to go. We've used them several times, and it's, it's helped quite a bit. So those, that was a good purchase. We've got three, looking ahead to the future now, three UV light boxes for decontamination as well, so they can use UV light to decontaminate things. And someone with you developed this box that can do, I want to say it does about 10 or 15 masks. It's smaller, it's portable, and it does less, but we'll have those. They're fairly inexpensive, and that's a long-term thing, so anytime we have an issue, we can put anything in there to decon. It'll help us again to be self-sufficient in the future if we had to. One of the things we just kind of stumbled upon, or actually, you know, entrepreneurs, they make up all kinds of stuff. Somebody started making reusable gowns, because right now, what we typically do is we purchase just a disposable, it's like a paper, heavyweight paper with a cloth, you know, covering on it, and we, we just use those ones, throw them away. And because we couldn't find them, someone decided they had figured a way to make them out of the water, impermeable fabric. Anyway, we've purchased 30 of those for the folks. We'll get them in different sizes, and the great thing about those is they're, I want to say they're $13 to purchase for this, one you can reuse versus $4 for a disposable one. So within three or four uses, we paid for it already, and these, these things can be, there's almost a indefinite life to them if you just clean them off with this, with the sprayer. So excited about that. So, excited about that. Okay. Let me do it on time. Anytime, any, I'm trying to stay under ten minutes here. It's, I'm being very chatty. Sorry. Um, as, as far as the stations and the, and the folks, they, uh, we are, we are, um, now cleaning the stations and, and the equipment, the apparatus twice a day. So, they get on shift. First thing they do is they clean the whole place down. And then at seven, uh, seven o'clock at night, they go ahead and clean it again. We're just making sure. Um, I kind of like this. Uh, it's kind of an extra work for them, so we'll, we, I don't know if this is going to continue on in the future, but they are getting good at that. So, and they, and they understand the importance of it. So, we're doing that to, uh, to keep our folks safe. Um, when they come in the buildings, uh, I think most people are doing this now. We have a, we have a single point of entry for each station that the firefighters coming onto duty have to go through one door. And they go to a room where they have a thermometer and they take the temperature and then they read the criteria of COVID, uh, 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 issues, COVID signs. And they just check off, it's a self-check, you know, do I have a fever? No. Do I have a cough? No, da-da-da. And if that's all good, then they go to work. And they actually do that twice during the day as well. Well, they come back during, um, some other period in the day and then generally in the morning. So, they're getting that for themselves, just to make sure with each other, uh, they're, uh, taken care of. All right, what else we got? So, you might see the folks, uh, if they're out and about, if you, if you, if you happen to, uh, run into them on a call. Uh, right now, we have, uh, gone for uniforms. We are, um, allowing them not to wear their Class B, their, their kind of Dave shirt. They're just wearing T-shirts. Uh, because, uh, it's, it was just getting really cumbersome after the, the COVID calls, to wash everything every time. And those were kind of, kind of pain. And they got really hot when you're wearing the gowns and whatnot. So, just for comfort and, uh, for cleaning their stuff, right now, they're going to be, they're allowed to respond to calls in their T-shirts. But if they go out to, uh, public, if they go to the store or something, we want them in their uniform shirts. So, the big thing for me, that was a big give on my part. Um, okay. So, as far as just, uh, uh, the mental health of the folks, uh, we seem to be doing fine. They, uh, you know, firefighters, uh, kind of have, they still joke a little bit, you know, which, which we're working on things and the responses is, is, it's a little, a little anxiety going around because you just don't know. But, uh, the fact that the calls have slowed down, it's given them a little more time between calls. They're helping each other out. We've got peer support available, uh, monitor, monitoring them, but, uh, they're a real tight community and, uh, they seem to be doing fine right now. We're definitely keeping an eye on that, uh, in, in going down the road. And I think, I think that's all I have as far as notes. Brunes, yes?
Is that your dog in the background? Just asking for a friend.
Did you hear it?
Little bit.
Unbelievable. I get that all the time. Sorry. She's right here at the door, the front door, because she knows I'm outside. He's just like, okay, sorry. Anything else? Any questions from anybody?
I, I have a question.
Hold on, hold on. Got to raise your hand. Councilmember Agnew.
Chief, uh, it sounded like you had patients early on that were, that, or did test positive for COVID-19. Uh, it, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but in my days, that would have been counted as an exposure.
Uh, I, I missed that first part you said. We had, you said, we had some folks that were tested positive?
No, you were saying you transported a number of patients early on that did test positive for COVID-19. And I was wondering, in my days, that would have been counted as an exposure. Has anybody been tested?
Uh, gee, early on, we had a call where someone came in there and took off their PPE, uh, early. But, but before we would have liked of them, and we were kind of scared, had them tested, no problem. Uh, we had, uh, one firefighter got some, uh, flu-like symptoms and went and got himself tested. And what was the other one? Um, so, we, we had another firefighter thought they might, uh, had had contact, but there, there wasn't. So, yeah, but then they, uh, Dr. Ray, our doctor, medical doctor, he's kind of determined. It's a, it's a moving target, but they've, they've determined exposures. You know, it's within a six-foot barrier that we talked about without any kind of protection and masks, and that's kind of what we're going for. So, if we've avoided that, um, and, and also in all our reports, we, we document what year we wore. So, King County's checking every report that comes through. And if they see anything or if anybody comes back from the hospitals that is tested for COVID, is positive, we don't know that often. We drop them off. We're assuming. We don't know. And if they find that out, they actually go back to the records, find the firefighters at that call, look at the report and make sure they were wearing their full PPE, the mag PPE. If they weren't, that's when you're going to get a hit or an exposure or an isolation or quarantine. And we've been stellar, um, on everything, uh, very, very careful. Um, and, uh, so, yes, we have had no, uh, direct contacts or exposures to us yet.
Great. I, you know, I trust Mickey and Tom Ray explicitly, so if you're under their auspices, you're going to do great. Thanks, Chief.
Yep, you bet.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I got a kick out of you, um, talking about having them clean the station houses twice a day. Growing up and hearing my mother say, you need more practice. You need more practice. And we ended up being pretty good at cleaning up the house. Uh, a couple of questions. Well, one is also a comment. Um, maybe a good month or so ago, got an email from a constituent concerned about, uh, people being safe and wearing, uh, protective devices, uh, you know, uh, P F, P S E on the water. And, um, we're concerned about seeing people on the water who were not being as safe as they ought to be. And, and like the very next day, our guys are down there doing a rescue on the flu. And they were, they got right in there and rescued whoever it was that needed help. And so, I was, it was a proud moment for me. And, uh, it was nice when, uh, somebody in the city is concerned about, are we as, as responsive as we, we can be? Yes, we are. You guys proved it, so I appreciated that. Um, uh, one question, because I know, because sometimes cardiac, uh, care, uh, can, can come with, uh, COVID, depending on how the disease is progressing. Have our cardiac calls increased or have those maintained about, been about the same as last year?
Uh, I would say, well, there's two on that, two things on that interestingly enough. So, I would say, no, our, our calls haven't gone up in cardiac. And, uh, early on, Seattle had an episode with a cardiac patient. He turned out to be COVID positive. So, soon thereafter, everybody on any kind of cardiac call, it's, it's, it's full-on PPE for everybody. So, we're taking really precautions on that. Um, I don't know if it's come out yet. Uh, Councilor Reagan may have seen it, but there, um, uh, King County has been putting out, is going to put out a, a PSA on the fact that we are seeing less cardiac. Uh, well, actually more deaths happening in the community with cardiac and stroke-related issues. And the fear is that people are, may not be calling 911 because they don't want to overload the system with COVID or they're afraid to go into the hospital with COVID or something's keeping them from doing that. And so, we're hoping that's not the case. We're going to get, try to get the word out that if you've got, you know, a stroke and a cardiac, please call. Just like always, we'll, we'll come out and do that. So, that is a, a dip county-wide in the cardiac.
That's an interesting phenomenon and I'm glad somebody was thinking about that. I have, I have one more question. You said with the, uh, hydrogen peroxide, you got about twenty re, we get about twenty reuses on a mask. Is that about the same for the UV boxes?
Uh, you know, I think UV boxes, the deterioration deal, at some point, like the, if the mask has a rubbery, uh, um, strap to it, those may degrade. And so, it's, you can't use it anymore. I don't think there is a, uh, uh, reuse life on the UV, but we'll definitely check. You know, twenty's pretty good, uh, uses out of those things. And we, and the protocol is for those, if they get any kind of, uh, uh, soil, you know, people, they get wet or, you know, they get gross, just throw them away. We don't even try to clean them. It's only if you've used them and you haven't had any new COVID contact patients, you use them for the day. It's an eight-hour period. You take them off. They're going to be using them. So, we need to be real careful with those.
So, so no one would be the wiser that they had been used before? They?
No, actually, funny, uh, these things come back theoretically cleaner than when you take them out of the package. I don't know how that's possible. It's, it's amazing. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Well, well, thank you for running a tight, tight ship. And, uh, thank everybody there in the, in the houses for us too.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Um, thank you. And that was a very good report. What I wanted to ask was, I'm always concerned about when people, your, your, your people on point go out, how do they go back and be sure their families are protected even when you don't know yet who they're dealing with or, or if the virus is active in them?
Well, you do. I know there's a, uh, I just saw, um, I think it's coming out of Kenmore. I'm sorry. Uh, there's, uh, 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 an issue where someone wants to get the COVID as a, as a presumed disease for firefighters. I guess it's nationally or back east, they've done that. So, they're, they're starting that, to be aware of that. Um, we, we don't. We really don't. Um, you know, but conversely, we don't know if a firefighter could bring it from home, really. You know, if you're out for five days and you come back, because you just don't know. This thing is, it's, it can, it can spread so quickly without any symptoms, you know, asymptomatic. And that's what we're really trying to do at work, uh, by kind of to monitor ourselves at work very, very carefully. And with all the stuff we wear, I have, I have high, high confidence that our folks are going home, uh, safe and well from, from the station.
Thank you, and that's important. I, I think that's one of the big things is to be sure that the families are protected because your, your men and women are out there and they're doing their job, but we want to protect our families.
Yeah, we leave all our gear at work, all their uniforms. They have lockers. We leave it at work. We clean it at work. We don't take anything home to clean it. Um, so they go home on their cities like they came in. So, we're, you know, we're trying to keep that part definitely separate.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, Chief, I have a question around the, um, accidents on the freeway. You had mentioned that there was a decline in, um, maybe not freeway accidents, but accidents in general. Um, is that automobile accident?
You know, um, I think I was just taking, uh, literary, literary, uh, I was just making that up. Not to say that I, I've seen a, a reduction in, in the accidents, but just that EMS calls in general have gone down and really haven't looked at what they are. Uh, but, um, because of the fact that people were staying home, uh, at this time, it went down. It was leading us to believe it's because the calls are going down because they're at home, not getting in trouble, right? They're just kind of hanging out, doing much as opposed to being out, doing things or at work. We, uh, obviously, the work calls have gone way down because there's nobody at work. So, that's kind of on that, in a general sense, right? Um, I don't have any direct information on accidents, no.
Okay. Um, and then as far as the, um, what's contributed to the zero, um, exposure, uh, what, what do you contribute to that? I mean, is it, is it the, the policies that we have in place in our department? Um, are, are you seeing low numbers across like the East Side specifically versus Seattle? But what's, what is a contributing factor to that?
Uh, well, part of it was, uh, just, just dumb luck. We just happened to be at the right place, right time. So, we, we all know this at Kirkland, right next to us, the first, right? So, everybody had a heightened sense, uh, we would have done the same thing they had done, by the way. You know, they were keeping protocols at the time. They just happened to walk in. They had no idea. Um, and then, so we learned quickly from that. Uh, Bothell, uh, Jeffrey Phillips did a good job of getting the city, uh, kind of on the fore edge of the forefront of this whole, uh, ramping up ECC and whatnot. And so, we kind of got our act together quicker than most, but, and, and realized we needed to get our folks in this gear. And then it took, it was, uh, Bothell's, it just took a while for some, for us to pick up cases in Bothell. It doesn't mean it wasn't here. It's just we seemed to be a little bit later. It gave us a little time to react. We really got ourselves together. King County Chiefs got together. We started setting up the protocols and that everybody was following with Dr. Ray and going through that. And, um, so that's kind of what it did, it was. We just were being, uh, and absolutely, and they're, the firefighters are on board with being very, very, um, certain you're wearing the gear every time. And, and the dispatchers helped us out a lot, though, you know, as I say, they query the patients and if they had any indication, they say, PPE advised. And if they weren't in it by then, they get into it before they go and see the patient. So, I think all that together has really helped us out.
Okay, fabulous. Well, um, in closing, I just want to thank you and the department, um, and the city for all the work and effort that you're putting into, uh, just to make them safe. And I commend and applaud you for, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Chief. I think it's great what you and your staff have done. Uh, it's just amazing, you know? I'll take luck, uh, being, uh, just learning from the others that didn't have as much luck as us. So, uh, and then I think it's just the attention to the detail of the plans put in place. Uh, because no matter how good of a plan is, if you don't follow through and pay attention to it, you know, it's, it's as good as the paper it's written on. So, you know, it's, you know, hats off to you guys. City manager, on to, oh, police?
Yes, thank you, Chief Croon, and we'll go on to Chief Suberlich.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I, uh, have a PowerPoint and I'm going to just let you know on technology challenge, somebody see if I can make this work. All right. Everybody see that?
We do.
Perfect. All right. Well, that's a plus. So, I, I don't want to, uh, go over too much of what, uh, Fire Chief has already gone over. But, uh, back in early March, uh, the city manager, uh, activated our, our emergency operations center. Uh, I, I must say, she had quite a bit of foresight, uh, considering I think we were way ahead of the curve when it came to our neighboring cities and, uh, their response. Uh, because of that, uh, we were able to, uh, implement a logistics, uh, support wing, which, uh, was able to help us out with our PPEs. Uh, I don't know if everybody's aware of this. PPEs, I think, have been all over the news and the challenge of trying to get those. And, uh, early on, it was, uh, it was very difficult. Uh, so, the city manager put together a logistics wing who worked feverishly to equip, uh, police and fire. Because, uh, as I think anybody knows, uh, we were still, we were still here, uh, every day and still, uh, doing the job. And that wa, that was a challenge early on. Uh, currently, uh, as far as, uh, PPEs go, um, one of the challenges we, we had to deal with right off the bat was we had to revamp our policy and procedures. We had a, a flu pandemic policy in place, um, and this was a little bit different. We needed to update it, uh, which, uh, required, uh, meetings very much like the, the Fire Department with our King County Chiefs and local fire to develop our response plan and make sure that all the officers were trained up on this, uh, new level of PPE that was going to be required up there. And for us, it just, uh, we ended up coming down to three different levels, probably very much like with Fire has. These little cards, uh, in the slide here, were up on advisor of our patrol cars. So, officers knew exactly, uh, what to do based on the response that was required. Uh, just like their dispatch, our dispatch would ask if, uh, anybody was suffering flu-like symptoms on our typical responses. And that gave us, um, a little bit of an opportunity to prep before we got to the call versus just rush right in. Uh, this is just an example of the different levels of PPE. Uh, our standard first level, uh, out and about when they're contacting, level two, and, and level three, full gown PPE. As the, uh, the weeks have kind of drawn on, uh, the, the police department has had on average roughly eighty employees here a week. I just kind of want to emphasize that, um, you know, like Fire, we're coming in here to work every day, uh, take care of the community. We're, we're not taking vacation. We did do some protocols and put those in place where we're distancing. So, an example would be our detective unit. Uh, half of them are on call one week and then they flip-flop back and forth. The people that aren't on call, we have work from home. Our admin support, administrative, uh, support, uh, we've had them work from home. But as far as the rest of the commissioned personnel, uh, they've been here working their assigned, uh, beats and shifts, uh, from the very beginning. One of the challenges we had early on, it was trying to ensure that we were going to be able to provide, uh, law enforcement services, uh, for the long haul in this. And, uh, as the city manager stated earlier, there's no playbook for this. So, uh, in our, uh, ECC meetings on, uh, twice a week that we had, we would discuss, you know, our staffing, our plans, our protocols, uh, and- know, our staffing, our plans, our protocols, uh, and part of this was determining that we were going to focus more on phone reports when possible to help with social distancing, focus on life safety calls, which are our on view misdemeanors and felonies and mandatory arrests, and, uh, also online reporting, which we've expanded and has worked quite well. But one of the things that I'd like to, uh, mention when it comes to this level of enforcement, I, I'm, I'm going to brag, um, my officers, the biggest challenge I had early on was telling them that I wanted them to, um, not go out there and make a bunch of on view traffic stops, that I just want them to focus on the life safety, to focus on the mandatory arrests, to keep them from, um, being exposed to COVID-19. I, I can tell you very few chiefs have that problem. My, my people, they love to work, they love to protect the city, um, they love to do police work, and, uh, so that's a problem that I'm proud of. I'd also like to say that over the course of, uh, this pandemic, uh, we haven't had a single employee at the Boffel Police Department test positive, uh, yet. You know, this is, there's long ways to go on this. We've, uh, implemented a lot of, uh, safety protocols, uh, just like fire. We have, uh, a temperature station as soon as the employee walks in the building and everybody's required to take their temperature. They're, uh, required to, uh, notify a supervisor if they don't feel a hundred percent. Uh, if they don't feel a hundred percent, we will send them home. And those protocols, along with the cleaning protocols, very much like fire, um, I think people are, are getting tired of hearing me say, hey, go, make sure you're washing your hands, make sure you're cleaning your workstations. Uh, officers are required to clean their workstations before and after, as well as their vehicles, uh, after transports, uh, just like fire. I'd kind of like to go into some calls for service to kind of give everybody an idea of where we're at and how the pandemic has affected us as far as law enforcement does. Uh, this is our, uh, calls for service. We have 2020, uh, which is in, I guess, a brown or an orange, and then we have the average, the three year average, which is in blue. So you'll notice that our calls for service from January were pretty much on par with the norm, and then as we moved into February, uh, into March, it dropped, uh, I don't want to say like a rock, but it dropped substantially, uh, which actually really surprised me considering that, uh, people were home. Onto officer initiated calls for service, and you can see here, um, again, looking at the, the three year average versus our 2020, January, February, pretty good numbers, and then again, just dropping, um, down. I don't want to say we're, we're not quite half of what we'd normally be, uh, for April for officer initiating calls, this would be the proactive traffic stops and such. This particular, uh, graph is really surprising to me. Uh, commercial burglaries have been on the rise, uh, throughout this, uh, pandemic for obvious reasons. Businesses have been shuttered, employees are home, people know that the business is empty, and, uh, that creates a target of opportunity for criminals. So we've, we've seen an uptick, and again, I don't want to, uh, alarm anybody, if you look at the numbers at the bottom, um, so instead of six for April, on average, we had eight. So it's not a huge increase, but, you know, those numbers are an increase. For March, it was double, uh, what would be normal, uh, so February and March would be, would be the anomalies more than anything else. Uh, this has actually been a hot topic throughout the region, so I'd kind of like to address this, domestic violence or domestic assault cases. This is on our radar, we're, we're monitoring it, uh, a couple times, uh, weekly, I have the report printed out so we can keep an eye on it. Domestic assault cases, uh, actually declined substantially, uh, into February and have been on a slow uptick, uh, ever since then. Uh, we're almost up to what the, uh, the three year average, uh, is without that March period of time. So again, it, it looks like we're, we're pretty much on par with what is normal, uh, not a whole lot that I'm really concerned with there, but we'll monitor it. And then as far as the verbal domestic cases, uh, those are on the rise. We're, we're seeing, uh, I'll just call it people, uh, losing their temper, short views, uh, the, uh, stay at home order is, I think, challenging just about everybody, uh, people want to get out, and, uh, that creates, uh, short views. But again, that's on the rise, the domestic assaults, uh, not as, not as great of a rise as I actually anticipated. Arrests, um, this actually is, is a really good graph to kind of show where we are at on January and February, uh, coming into 2020. Our arrests were, uh, more than double, uh, what they were the previous year, and, uh, that has a lot to do with the proactive officers, the levy officers that we brought on board, uh, going out there and doing great police work. Uh, you can see pretty much in March where I asked them to focus on the life safety calls for service and cutting back, the proactive traffic stops in hopes of, uh, preventing the spread of COVID within the department, uh, those numbers dropped off. The good news is, it's, it's dropped down to our three year average, so, um, it's, it's a substantial drop that it's where we were on average for the past three years. Another thing I would like to point out is, uh, over to the right of that graph, you will see our arrest offense category and the number of offenses. So this is from March through May. You will notice that the top two, uh, offenses that we're dealing with is the drug narcotic violations and drug equipment violations, drug paraphernalia. Uh, that gives you an idea of the amount of drug enforcement that our officers are doing within the community. These are the same people at this, that are out there committing the crimes, the burglaries and, and such. Typically, these violations are not just, uh, somebody that is, um, just using, there's other things going on in the car or when we contact them. Uh, another thing, and this came out of, uh, the court study, is that, uh, I believe we were the only agency municipality in the state where, uh, actually drug enforcement made the top ten, and for us, it was number one. These are just some pictures, uh, that I wanted to post from, uh, some of the police work we've done in just the past couple weeks. Uh, we're finding that more and more suspects are coming in contact with their armed and, uh, with the guns loaded, and they're carrying, uh, a fair amount of narcotics, uh, a different array of narcotics, whether it's methamphetamine, that's making a, a big comeback, heroin, of course, has been a problem for quite some time. Fentanyl, we're finding more and more fentanyl, uh, in contacts, uh, normally it's in pill form, uh, that we're finding it, uh, but this is just a few pictures from cases we've had in the past couple weeks. I would like to touch on our radar program, which is the response awareness de-escalation referral program. It's in essence our navigator program that we partner with five different agencies, that's Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park and Shoreline. Uh, this is funded through, uh, mid-grant through King County. We've got this program finally up and running with our, our radar manager, Brooke, and, uh, it's a couple little hiccups, we're fielding people and right as the pandemic hit, so we have a couple, uh, navigators out there, uh, working, we ideally would be up at four. As you can see from, uh, some of the data, uh, with the five different agencies, uh, this navigator program is a game changer for us, uh, without a doubt. Uh, it is, um, making a huge difference in our community. It's cutting back on, uh, the repeat nine one one calls that we get, which then opens those lines up for real emergencies. We can get people out there, we can, uh, create a response plan, so, uh, we can help de-escalate, which is super important when we're, we're dealing with people in the community who may be suffering from a crisis. And, uh, you know, the, the, the big thing is, you know, we want to make sure we're there to help, we want to make that work. So having this navigator go out there and work with us to help develop these plans is, uh, again, it's, it's a huge game changer. It is, uh, probably one of the best programs I've seen in my career, and, uh, will make a big difference in the future. I would also like to add, um, we have a navigator through our levy. I'm hoping to get that position, uh, filled as we, uh, come into fall. I'm hoping that we'll be able to do some oral boards and whatnot to get that position filled and plug them in with this program that is working so well. So staying in touch with our community, um, uh, the city manager and, uh, I along with fire, uh, recognized early on if we're going to be reducing our proactive enforcement, it's super important to stay connected with our community. And this is just an example of, uh, some of the things that we have done. I know fire has done the same thing where they, they go by somebody's house who's having a birthday, and I think that that, um, is a great thing to do when we have the time. Uh, we've also had officers, uh, with the Police Officers Guild go to certain restaurants and, uh, you know, say the first person that meets us down here will buy you lunch, um, to help support some of our local businesses who are, are really being hit hard. It, it's, uh, it's been, it's been a great program for them. Uh, some of the other things we're going to be doing is, uh, we have a food drive that we're going to be doing for Hope Link this Friday and Saturday here at the, the police department in the front lot to help those who are in need, uh, Hope Link, uh, is definitely in need of, of additional resources to help, uh, those impacted in our community, and I'm really happy that we're able to participate in that. Some of the other things, uh, that have been, uh, I guess, happy moments are, we have an amazing animal control officer, Kristy Boucher, and, uh, I don't know if anybody saw what she did on Twitter, it was kind of humorous, uh, we, we managed to get a, uh, a blow up flamingo from a neighbor to help us rescue some wood ducks, uh, from a, a pond, a retention pond, and, uh, as you can see, I mean, the outreach, it's, it's, it's super popular with our community, and actually not just our community, all, all around the United States and world for that matter. She is a, a great ambassador, uh, for the police department and, uh, just does a phenomenal job. Also, uh, again, making contact with the community. We, we can't say enough about our, our medical staff, uh, locally that has helped us out, whether it's the doctors, doctors, nurses and whatnot. And, uh, this is just an example of one of the things we did, we, we took some doughnuts over to Lakeshore Clinic, um, we don't just eat them, we can give them out too, um, and just to show our, our support for them and, uh, the long hours and, uh, the work that they've been doing. And in closing, I would like to point out that it is National Police Week, and, um, it's an opportunity for us to, uh, recognize, uh, those that have given the ultimate sacrifice in protecting our communities. I would like to say, uh, most recent study that I saw from, uh, Fraternal Order of Police is that we've lost a hundred and one police officers from Corona, uh, COVID-19, um, since this started, and, uh, it, it impacts police, it impacts fire, it impacts nurses out there, and, um, you know, I, I will tell you, I'm super proud of this organization and, uh, super proud of the, the work they're doing. And that is my presentation.
Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Chief, for that, um, presentation. I particularly appreciate the information regarding the domestic violence. What I wanted to ask is, I mean, I, I know the numbers don't appear like, uh, domestic violence is up, but I, I think anybody that knows anything about domestic violence would say this is a situation ripe for domestic violence. People are under stress, they don't have jobs, their children, God love them, are running around the house all day. I, I just can't imagine that anyone would think that it's gone down, and so I'm curious, are we doing anything proactively? Um, I, obviously there are certain individuals that have histories, um, and so I'm wondering if there's anything we're doing proactively or anything we can look to do proactively. I, I'm really concerned that this is just driven underground because, um, victims are not in position to ever be away from their abusers because they're stuck in the home with them all day, um, and so, I, you know, I'm truly concerned, what are we doing, what can we do? I, I, there's, there's just no way that, that it isn't worse and that people aren't, aren't getting hurt.
Councilmember Duer, this is, uh, City Attorney Paul Burnett, I think I can answer that.
Right.
So one of the things that we have, um, constantly done and we continue to do in our departments is, um, provide those types of services for people that are in the position where, um, they are not safe in their home, and we have a human services agreement, um, with an entity in Snohomish County where, uh, we provide safe housing, um, and safe sheltering, um, should someone be in that situation. And it's not only safe sheltering within the, the entity itself, but also we have hotel vouchers so that if people are, if that, if that organization is full, we, we also have hotel vouchers so we can ensure that Boffel residents, um, if they need such services, will get them. And that hasn't changed based on COVID-19.
So the, it's, the assistance is available, but my question is more around, um, people's inability to get that help because they're stuck in a situation where they can't get away from the abuser to reach out for that help, potentially.
And, and that's the thing is, I mean, it's a bit, I mean, the problem is, what the, the service we provide is that if there has been a, a reported incident of abuse in the home and the police are involved, that's when that service is triggered. Um, they can always reach out to the city and ask for available resources, um, I, I don't want to give away too much as to where the facility is located for obvious reasons. But yes, they can reach out to City Hall, put them in touch with the legal department, and if those services are needed, we can put them in touch with our advocate, who can provide those services.
If I may add, um, I, I know that some of the neighboring cities, uh, may be having, or counties for that matter, may have a dramatic increase. I, I've heard some numbers toss anywhere between that twenty and thirty percent increase, um, and they have, and that's a response that those agencies are actually doing to houses where they actually have those hard numbers. From a positive side, I mean, we're just not seeing that increase. Now, that's not saying that, uh, clearly that people aren't having s, some domestic abuse going on in the community, I mean, it'd be crazy to think that that's not occurring. But as far as, you know, the nine one one response and contacting, uh, we're, we're just not seeing the same increase that a lot of the neighboring municipalities or counties are. Um, I think that's, that's good, um, but like you said, you know, a, a number of people don't report it, and it goes on for a long time before they finally do. We have used our navigator, um, in situations like that to help out because a lot of times there's other things at play as well, like substance abuse, whether it's drugs or alcohol, um, trying to get people into anger management. There, there's lots of things that we do when we go out there. I, I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that when we just go out there and it's kind of like just a fax, ma'am. You know, it's, we, we, we really want to drill down and find out exactly what's going on, because ideally we want to solve the problem and protect people so we, you know, first of all, everybody's safe and, and happy and healthy, um, and that way we're not going back and repeating resources, you know, dedicating them over and over and over again to a house. So if we, we are doing things, it's, it's a challenge though, um, with these, you know, because oftentimes they, they go on for a long time before they report it.
And Chief Suberlik, if I could also add to that, um, one of the other things that we've done is that, um, for many of our DV victims, they are no longer with their abusers, but for those who have come to the legal department where we think that they have stayed with the person that initially perpetrated against them, um, that we've, uh, I've asked our DV advocate to reach out to see if there are people that she believes are in, um, increased ri, at, at, at increased risk, um, to see if they need services. Fortunately, many of our victims, um, are no longer with their abusers. There are a few, um, that we have reached out to and, um, to make sure that they're aware of the services that we can provide them, so.
Uh, thank you both for, uh, for those answers. I, uh, sorry, I keep drilling down on this, it's just something that weighs heavy on my mind, and, um, what you said has been reassuring, and I, I didn't in any way mean to imply that we're not doing enough, um, I just think it's a really touchy subject, you know, really interesting.
I didn't take that at all, that you were implying that we weren't doing enough, um, I just forgot to include that in my presentation statement, but we are aware, I think we're aware of, while they're having DUIs because people aren't going that far, they might be saying, oh, and then there, that's the repercussion.
And just so you know, I didn't take it that way either. No, I just want to make sure that we're, you have an understanding of where the data is and, you know, we're trying to be as proactive as we can and, you know, be a resource for people who are in need.
Thanks, both of you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
All right. Now, did I speak to you right, bud? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So first of all, I really want to say how much I appreciate your doing the food banks this weekend. That's really.
I just want to say I can't take responsibility for that. Officer Bobby Buendia, he is probably one of the most giving people I know. He puts it together and spearheaded it and, you know, people just volunteered and want to participate in it. We definitely.
I just really appreciate that. And then secondly, there's a couple of concerns I have, and one of them is our recording of child abuse. So I know when schools are in session, we have more opportunities for that, right? So how are we affecting that? I know when families stay at home, it's far more difficult for them.
No, I agree 100%. I mean, oftentimes those issues are caught at the school level and because everybody's at home and being homeschooled, yeah, it's a challenge. We recognize that in law enforcement. We pay close attention when we're responding to those domestic, verbal domestic disturbances to look for indicators that, you know, children have been, are being abused or, you know, that it's not just verbal, that it's actually physical. And, you know, separate the parties and try to drill down into that. I'm happy to report we're not seeing a huge increase over what would be normal numbers. That's not to say it's not happening. It's just, you know, we're not, it's just not being reported. I know that other, again, other municipalities, other cities are seeing an increase and a lot of times that's coming out from doctor visits. So that's the other part of that, you know, which seems to be a little bit of a safety measure.
Right. And then one last thing, because I know everybody's talking about this, is the increase in speed limits on our roads because it's like not very many cars, so the traffic, they increase the speed limit. Are you seeing that?
Yeah, you're talking about speeders who are exceeding the speed limit, I'm assuming.
Exactly.
They have not increased the speed limit.
Yeah. So, yes, we.
I mean, speed.
With people speeding, we've received numerous complaints from neighborhoods about, you know, engines roaring and people racing through neighborhoods. We've been trying to get the officers out there to hit those various areas. Here a couple of weeks ago, I'm fairly certain we had a group of racers down there in the Parkway that were racing around. They're very mobile. They just hop the freeway really quick and get out of town. But, you know, we've been out there. It's life safety. If they're driving reckless, if they're driving, you know, negligent driving, we're making stops on them. I will say this Friday, we're going back to operations as normal, which just means normal policing as we were prior to the pandemic. You know, with the caveat that the civilian employees are still going to be, you know, rotated in as needed, the detectives are still going to be rotated. But as far as the operation division goes, it's going to be back to business as usual, traffic enforcement and whatnot.
So what's really interesting, I walk on 88th Avenue in the northeast between the 180th and West Dale School, and there's a charger that sort of speeds up, so we take out our phones and take pictures and then it slows down. So yes, we use.
I think that's the Dina that's doing that. I'm kidding.
We do our own releases.
All right. Definitely call us.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
What if they need you? But thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. One is echoing the food, food drive, which is great that it's being purposefully staged and I'm sure social media will have, be announcing that. So my question is, is this going to be just solely for people or can people bring pet food to donate? Do you know? Does Hope Link take pet food?
Yeah, I don't know, but I can find out and get back with you. I'm certain they probably wouldn't turn it away because a number of people do have pets. I just can't see that. If nothing else, our animal control officer has issued out bags of dog food for those in need.
Perfect. So we could filter out for her to have that on the backside.
We can figure it out.
Okay, great. And we can include cats in that too?
Oh, no, not cats.
I like both in moderation. So my question, I may be putting you on the spot here, so you just tell me if I am. So I have a friend who works for a police department south of us and has told me about gang activity moving up from Renton up towards this area. And so when you were saying that we were had, you guys had seized more guns and mixed and a larger variety of different drugs? Did I understand that right?
Yes.
Can you hypothesize or point your finger to who it is that's carrying that? So my question is, do we have gang activity that's getting more active here in our area? Or can we even make that leap?
So I've worked here since 1990 and since 1990, we've always had gang activity here.
Okay.
I will tell you, it is not a huge problem. And what I mean by huge problem is it's not a nightly thing. I wouldn't even call it a weekly thing. But, you know, we're on the 405 corridor and they do come out and visit Babel. And a lot of times you'll see that in, whether it's organized retail theft, you'll see that in car prowls where they'll come in and a bunch of them will hit a particular apartment complex and hit a number of vehicles and hop right back on 405 and go. So as far as gang activity that I think people think of, they think of drive-by shootings, they think of, you know, people moving guns on the corner, that's not the type of activities we see with our drug culture that we're dealing with. It's just not. I'm not.
Population's been pretty, activity's been pretty stable. It hasn't, you haven't seen an increase or uptick in it?
I have not, no.
Okay.
But I would definitely let you know if I did.
Okay.
I will say that our drug trafficking, as far as people contacting, we're arresting, it's increasing a fair amount.
Okay.
Mostly in those soda zones we're contacting.
Well, that was my next, that was my next question is what's happening in our soda, soda areas with COVID? Is it, is it being impacted by COVID at all or is it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So as far as, the crime hasn't really slowed down. But what we end up dealing with is when we go arrest them and we make contact, now they're COVID positive. So what it does do is it makes us jump to a bunch of hoops. We haven't had any real exposure from a suspect. They say they're COVID positive. We take them, they get tested, they're not. We've had it to the point where they actually have a note from a doctor saying they're COVID positive that they created in hopes of avoiding going to jail. We actually called on that one to issue a script saying they're COVID positive. And no, no, we did not. So they're, they're very creative.
I was going to say that, very creative, but you're already one step ahead of them. So I.
We're trying to be. It's complicated, it's complicated our life a bit, you know, because we take them to jail, they have to be screened. We actually have to take them to the hospital to be screened. It's.
And then that complicates for our frontline workers there at the hospital as well, like other battles they have to be fighting. So that's a shame. Domestic violence, one thing that struck me when this COVID first hit was the number of seniors that would just violate the six-foot buffer. There, all of a sudden I had a rash of seniors that were getting up really close to my face and wanting to talk and I thought tying in navigators work, you know, the mental health of seniors, problems with dementia, which there's often a violent component. Have those demographics shown that kind of domestic violence uptick at all with COVID? Or is it, or is that population pretty, staying pretty much the same with their calls?
Yeah, there's, I don't have any data to show that we've had any sort of increase in that area. Yeah, most of our 911, they don't involve people with dementia and things like that because we wouldn't label that necessarily as a domestic assault. That would probably be something where we'd be contacting APS, contacting family members. It's a mental health issue more than a domestic assault. There's no real intent because they're.
Okay. Have there been more of those calls off the top of your head?
No.
About the same? Okay. Let's see. Are there any other questions? I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hey, now you can hear me. You know, looking at total arrests in January, February, they were significantly higher than we had seen in years past, like three times coming up on as high. What do we attribute that to?
Proactive policing. We have police officers going out there looking for people that are committing crimes, drug crimes, it's a soda zones. It is amazing, creatures of habit. They go to these same locations to commit crimes, sell drugs, steal items, shoplifting. I mean, it's a daily event at Home Depot, for example. We could almost station a cop down there all the time. Fred Meyer, again, it's another location that we could, again, just probably put a police officer up there all the time. It is just that commonplace. Our hotels that we have in town that are also in the soda zones, those keep us extremely busy. It's a transient population, so it's not just Babel residents that are, you know, mostly coming in to buy their drugs and they need up here. So the good news is we're getting quite the reputation of this is not an area that they want to deal drugs because we seized their car and we put them in jail. So some of the neighboring jurisdictions take a little bit of a softer side to that. But, you know, my goal is to try to get people into a program to help get them off drugs. Sometimes, you know, the arrest is what they need to push them over the ice and need help. And we've seen that, I think, that our court with our judge is doing a superb job trying to get people plugged into programs to get them healthy, get them off what they're addicted to. You know, it's not just about the arrests, it's about stopping the behavior. And so if we're making those contacts and we're getting them in the system, then we have a better chance of actually getting them off that at some point. That's, that's the goal. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the update. Around the proactive policing, I know that was a, it's been a big conversation regionally, especially the training facility. Do you feel that the proactive policing that you've been doing has had a positive impact on our community?
Councilmember McNeil, can you please speak more into your microphone? You trailed off towards the very end of that. I'm sorry. Yeah, my question, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
My question was leaning towards proactive policing. Has that had, since we've started, has it had a positive impact on our community?
You know, I think the, time will tell. You know, it's not a, I don't want this to be confused with a New York Stop and Press because that's not what this is. This is people that are committing crimes or have warrants for their arrest that we monitor, you know, the, their behavior down at like Home Depot or Fred Meyers. It's, I guess, you know, part of the challenge is, somebody who's been doing this job for a long time, that the, the drug culture typically, a lot of times people like to say that it's a victimless crime because it's just their drugs. But the people that we're contacting, those aren't the people that we're arresting. These are the people that are stealing from Home Depot. These are the people that are breaking into the cars. These are the people that are burglarizing the houses. You know, the people that, this is their, they just get caught because they're a user. We try to get them into programs pretty quick. The people that we're really trying to focus on are the ones that have this problem and are doing criminal acts to take advantage of others to fund that addiction. And again, with the goal of get them off whatever they're addicted to. I don't think jail is a good fix for anybody who has an addiction problem. It's kind of a last resort. Ideally, my goal is that, for lack of a better description, bad arrest helps send a rock bottom. You know, they hit their rock bottom and, you know, enough's enough, this is a bad thing, I'm going to jail, I need to turn my life around. And the officers were really, I think, very fortunate. Our officers care about the community that they serve, they care about the people that we come in contact with. And the common thread that my, the officers here say is, you know, good people can make bad decisions. You know, if, we don't label them as bad people. Good people make bad decisions. Good people get addicted to drugs. And, you know, we try to treat them like we would want to be treated, like we'd want our family members to be treated. There's a number of officers here who have family members that are addicted to drugs and it's, they don't, they don't take it lightly. They, they, they want to help solve the problem. They want to help stop the addiction. So we're just trying to create some balance. With that, we're, again, kind of going back to that. I think we're taking a lot more guns off the road now from these people that are selling. That's a big deal. And, you know, the fact that those people are out in our community concerns me. Those are the people that are selling drugs to our kids, selling drugs to our neighbors, selling drugs to our loved ones. So if I can impact that and make this an unpleasant place for them to do business, that's my goal.
That's what I hear about proactive policing is it does do that, allow you guys to do that. Go ahead.
And I would like to add, I, the legal department is also not supporting Stop and Press. That is, that is not what we do. That is not an okay policy. Everyone has constitutional rights and we follow those, but we do care about our citizenry and the people that are impacted by drug use.
Thank you for that, Paul. Also, I wanted to clarify, when we talk about gangs, you had mentioned that we've had gangs since, I believe you've been here since 1990, so that we've had gangs. But what is, what is a Babel gang like?
You know, it's typically, it represents our demographic, white teenagers typically. I will say it's mostly talk when they say that they're gang members, whether they're trying to get some sort of street cred. It's not like what we typically think of when we think of like Bloods and Crips and things like that. Most of the gang activity that I see or have seen over the past few years, it's the 405 corridor. It's the, using that to stop, whether it's north-south 405, to commit car prowls, to organize retail theft, things like that. It's not your traditional, I think sometimes people think like South-Central LA kind of mindset. And that's just, that's not what we're talking about here. It's cultural too. You could have Hispanic gang members, Asian gang members. Those, that demographic, we've seen a bit. It's not a, I would say that we have a gang problem. We've had a gang presence, you know, but it's not a substantial presence.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what that meant and that he understands. The gang is coming in many different forms.
And I think the key is with that is there's a lot of things that go along with that, you know, there's, you know, there's socioeconomic issues that we recognize. We focus on the behavior. Um, we focus on the behavior of the individual. You know, are they committing crimes? You know, uh, is it a drug thing? Is it a retail theft? I think those, that's what we focus on. Um, we don't focus on, you know, how somebody's dressed or anything like that. Uh, that's not exactly the best way to do any sort of, uh, gang enforcement. Um, and we may have indicators, but focus on the activity, what's going on.
Great. Thank you.
Um, and I, sorry, Councilmember, uh, McNeil, if I could jump in, I just want to make sure that, um, we all understand again, like, I, I appreciate what, uh, Chief Superlick is saying in terms of the, the return to proactive policing. But I want to make sure this council meeting gets focused on things that are COVID-19 related or routine and necessary. I just want to make sure that, I think we're in a bit of a gray area and I just want to make sure we stay on topic. I think this is an important topic within the COVID-19 pandemic response, but I just want to make sure we don't deviate too far from that.
Thank you, Paul. I'll make sure I keep my, uh, comments to COVID-19 related. Uh, so the next one is COVID-19 related. I think, um, Deputy Mayor Zornz, or I, I'm not sure exactly who brought it up first, but, um, somebody spoke about speeding. Um, I know Councilmember McAuliffe also spoke about it. But, um, I can tell you firsthand, hopefully you're hearing me because, Paul, you're leaning towards the camera. So that tells me you might not be hearing me. Um, but.
I always do that. But, yeah, I, I got you.
Um, one, either way, specifically, um, there is a, an uptick in speeding along this road because there is far less traffic. Um, and I know that one of the, the impacts that we had in a positive way, um, on this road, specifically in other roads throughout Boffel, was when we had these signs, I can't remember the name of them, that we put up that tell your speed. And I'm not sure if we have plans to put those back up again, but those might be a deterrent, um, to help to some degree, uh, slow the, the vehicle traffic down a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that, um, it, it's not just when either, it's, it's truly, it's a, it's a regional problem. Um, whether it's the big roads like, uh, 522 or 405 or 527, 228, uh, going up towards the old Nike site, uh, Meridian Northwest. I mean, it is, it is truly all over the city. Um, and that's kind of some of the challenges of trying to get there because they're, they're in and out so fast. But I do think that on your, like, the daily commute stuff, a lot of times those, um, reader boards, speed reader boards, uh, really slow down the people who, uh, just may not be paying attention. It's like a reminder, oh, I need to slow down. Just, just because the road's open doesn't mean I can go 15 miles an hour or more. Well, I can check into that for you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. I think it's, it's important. Um, I, I've heard from several members of the community, um, concerns kids are out, uh, walking, um, especially along some of these roads. Uh, the curve near Wayne gets very busy. I know up on 228, uh, there's quite a few along 9th up there. So quite a few areas around parks and things like that, I know, um, when people are speeding and kids are out and about, uh, it becomes a very dangerous thing, especially, um, this time of year as well, when it gets hot and more people go out. Um, lastly, I, I just, I wanted to say, um, uh, you know, both you and the fire chief brought up, um, how, how Boffel, um, was very proactive in the beginning of this. Um, and I think that, um, hearing from you and the fire chief on the fact that we have, uh, low or no, um, cases within our own departments, um, I think fundamentally says a lot about how we approach this. Um, and I just want to say thank you, uh, to, to you, both the chiefs, um, and the city manager for your, for your efforts and, uh, making sure that our staff, uh, those who are first responders, those on the front lines, um, including all the city staff, uh, are kept safe, um, because it, it, it shows true leadership uh, in what we need to do throughout our community, on keeping our community safe. Um, and hopefully others around our region are taking note, um, of what we've done here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, looks like Councilmember Doer has another question. Uh, we can, uh, all right. I'll go to Councilmember Agnew first. He didn't get his first round. So Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank both of our chiefs for the stellar work that they've been doing in this, uh, unrealistic time that we have. Uh, I think both fire and police have done an outstanding job. Uh, I think they've made us all proud that we live in the city of Boffel. And I want to commend you on that.
Thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a, a question. Sorry, there's some reverb. Um, I got an email today from, to, to Reverb's, uh, um, asking, they have a neighbor who's having, um, regular, um, multi, I don't know, multi-carload of people, parties at their house and gathering and wondering if, uh, what to do about it. And, um, I'd forgotten earlier when I was thinking my comments about domestic violence, um, to ask and to inquire. He said, um, they're, they're having large gatherings of people, 10-plus people, seven-plus cars in the neighborhood. Obviously a, uh, violation of the governor's stay-at-home order. And I didn't know if, um, we're doing anything about that or if that's something that needs to go to a different agency or, uh, do we need to have, talk about this offline?
I, I think I can jump, sorry, Chief. Okay. Um, I, I think that we, we can't do anything about it unless we're aware of it. And so if we are aware of those situations, then the police can definitely investigate. And they would forward that investigation to the prosecutor's office, who would then make a charging decision if it's, um, appropriate under the circumstances. Um, but if there are concerns, um, about violation of the governor's order, that needs to be reported to police so they can do the proper investigation.
I would like to.
I want that email to, to, um, both of you.
Perfect. One thing I would like to add is I'm a big fan of the ambassador style of enforcement on this. Uh, where we go out there and we contact people, encourage them to comply with the order. Um, people, people are getting very stir-crazy. Um, and so I, I think just being able to have a conversation, 99% of the time just resolves that issue.
All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, Chief. Thank you for you and all your staff do for us in the community. Uh, stay safe out there. All right.
Thank you very much.
So that was part of our, that was wrapping up our city manager reports. Uh, just wrap up our agenda here. The council committee reports. Does anyone have any report they would like to do? All right, seeing none. Uh, city clerk, were there any visitor comments?
Uh, hello? Am I muted? Sorry, Mayor?
Councilmember McAuliffe? Looks like you're muted again.
How much work they've done? Wait a minute?
Hey, Councilmember McAuliffe, we didn't hear the first part of that. You're muted again.
It, it does it automatically.
All right, there you are.
That's, okay, there you are. So I just want to emphasize how important it is that the city and the business community work together to, um, kind of get through this difficult time. And I want to really thank Councilmember Doer for thinking of, uh, closing Main Street for businesses, to the out, uh, restaurants, and also Jeanie Ash for going out there and talking to them. Anything we can do as a city to support these local businesses is critically important. So we all need to, and I know, uh, Jeanie Zornz, who go to all the council meetings and talk to everybody and listen to everybody. So, yeah, we, this is a difficult time for us small businesses. And I, I'm going to help the best I can and I appreciate all of you helping as well.
Thank you, Councilmember McAuliffe. Uh, I sh- I believe we all share those sentiments. Um, were there any, uh, public comment, visitor comment?
Yes, we had one from, uh, Carrie Westerbeck, who represents Bothelites for People Oriented Places. And it was encouraging, uh, in support of a healthy open street pilot program for Main Street.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for. All right. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Uh, great to see everyone. Chiefs, thank you both for your reports. Uh, it's great to know that we're being smart and safe out there. Uh, keep up all, all the great work. Thank you, everyone.